I can see you, Ms. Matheny.
I'm good.
I can hear you too now. Are we weighing on anyone else?
Sorry about that. I had some technical difficulties.
No problem. If mine shows down again, you take over. Alright. If we're ready. Everybody's ready? Okay. I got a thumbs up for Jay. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and start. I'd like to welcome you to our May fourteen, twenty twenty virtual meeting of the city council. We hope you and your families are staying safe and healthy. Tonight's council meeting is the third council meeting we are conducting using communications media technology as authorized by the executive order of the governor during the current pandemic. We appreciate your patience and assure you that your city council remains committed to providing the public a fair and reasonable opportunity to participate in council meetings. We sincerely appreciate your continued understanding as we work through this temporary manner of conducting meetings. To tonight's meeting participants, as the presiding officer, I request that each council member or designated staff member request that they be recognized by me by just simply saying, may I speak? Please do that before speaking. I will do my best to quickly recognize and call upon you. All participants should use the mute function and only unmute yourself when you seek to be recognized to speak and while you are speaking. Please remember that this meeting is being broadcast to the public and therefore we request that you eliminate any background distractions you may have at your location. Prior to the council taking final action on any agenda item, applicants or members of the public who are present in the public access area will be recognized to address the council. Applicants or members of the public who have pre-registered to address the specific agenda item through communications media technology will be recognized to address the council and email or written statements that have been timely submitted will be read into the record. The normal rules I stated earlier regarding public comment still apply. Thank you for your cooperation and efforts to ensure this council meeting is conducted in the best interest of the city of St. Cloud. With that, I call this, uh, meeting to order. And we will have our invocation by Pastor David Nye from Christ Our Savior Fellowship Church. And then could we please stand as he does the invocation and after which I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Our heavenly father, we thank you for another day of life. We thank you for the blessing that you have poured out on us today. We thank you for your grace and for your mercy and for your love. We intercede on behalf of all the families that have been afflicted with the COVID nineteen and we pray that you would give them peace. Lord, we also pray for the members of the city council and ask that you would give them wisdom, direction and guidance as they discuss and debate issues that come before them this evening. And we ask your blessing on our city, on our state and on our nation. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The the roll call, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper? Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Here.
The next item on the agenda are presentations, but there are no presentations at this time. The next item is our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is required to complete a signing form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. Madam Clerk, is there anyone who has requested to speak during the citizens forum?
We don't have anyone present for the citizens forum. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First of all, I'll ask, is there any item that the council member, a council member wishes to speak to? Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Could we pull item T as in Tom and U as in umbrella for discussion?
T and U. Thank you. Are there any other items from the council? Madam Clerk, is there anyone in the audience that has requested to speak to an item?
I do have some that have registered. I have, um, for Lancaster Park, East, three and four. Correct.
Is that the only item?
And item A for twenty twenty dash fifty. And item eighty-two R, which is item. I'm sorry, that's G ninety-two R. There's no need for that person to speak unless you have questions on that item.
Okay. Let's go to item A since, uh, just take them in order. Has someone requested to speak to item A?
Yes, that was Nicole Smith.
Is she in the chamber?
She is online.
I apologize. I didn't realize I had selected to speak on that item. I, I am representing the surveyor though.
Okay. So you're there to answer any questions?
Yes, I will be.
Okay.
And that's for Lancaster Park, I think.
Thank you. There doesn't seem to be any?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I don't think we have anyone speaking to item G, do we, or asking any question? Then what brings us to item T? Deputy Mayor Matheny, would you like to address your concerns?
Yeah, so, um, yes, first it's a kudos. Uh, I think they've done a great job getting all these, um, historic buildings on the National Register of Historic Places. Um, I served on the, um, Historic Society as the secretary for, I don't know, about six years. So I love all this stuff. I, when I had my gender review, I asked staff about the repairs to this building. So I don't know if you recall, but this building was dam, you know, their buildings were damaged in the hurricane and basically they've been living inside of like plastic sheeting and and dealing with the, with the damage because we were trying to pursue grant funding, which we did not receive. Which, you know, it's the, it's the, um, risk you take, obviously. Um, we did not receive this funding. So now we're gonna try to go a different route and get, you know, I did ask during my gender review if we could prioritize and try to like expedite this. Waiting for two years, you know, in this, um, limbo. So I just wanna ask the other council members, do you guys agree with that? I know, um, you know, if all of us kind of find in that we'd like to prioritize and, and push this forward as fast as we can.
Would any of the other council members like to speak to that? Councilmember Askew?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm good with that. I, um, they've been waiting for a, a long time. So if we can get them rolling, that'd be great.
I think, uh, Councilmember Trace is in support of that also, as I am. I would like to, if we haven't put a dehumidifier in there wherever any of our paper documents are, they certainly need to do that immediately until regardless of what we do, just to make sure we preserve those uh, documents from molding and uh, but I certainly am in favor to doing whatever we can to move this forward as quick as possible.
So I, I don't have all of the specifics, but I do know that they have been working tirelessly trying to get all of the documents scanned and into a database. I know that that's something they've been doing with volunteers and, um, they're doing a fantastic job. I just, you know, I'm, I'm sure there's a, a little frustration on waiting and then we find out, oh, that didn't work out. And then now we gotta shift gears and go a different, a different route. Um, so just anything we could do to kind of expedite that and support them would be great.
Good. So yes, uh, Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, I just wanna ensure the council, we hear you loud and clear. Uh, we have money budgeted. We were waiting for that grant funding, which we did not get. Um, contingent on that, we're ready to move forward. Our staff architect has a plan in place and I've directed the facilities and building official to move forward. So thank you for your support.
Great.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to item U?
Sure. So this is the, um, agenda item that I had pulled last meeting and wanted to get some of the details and they weren't able to provide those. Um, I know that Andre received an update from Lancaster. I'd like to go through it for public record purposes. If Mr. Anderson could go through and address all the questions that, um, were unanswered at our last meeting.
Mr. Anderson, are you prepared to do that?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor.
The floor is yours.
Share my screen.
You may.
I hope you can see the screen, but these are the, by the, is Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. The, from the screen is, uh, a list of zoning requirements that we typically require, um, developments that might have been developed in the county that are getting water supply agreements. And we have applied these to other developments within the city limits. Um, this occurred sometime after, to the latter part of twenty eighteen. This project, as you know, was approved prior to twenty, to twenty eighteen and as such, were not subject to these requirements. However, staff went through and reviewed all the various documents that were approved in the city to see how they might have addressed those requirements. So as far as architectural variation and sheet twenty and twenty-one of the master plan, they provided several elevations and if you allow me, I'll shift to that, um, imagery. Oops, sorry. This image. And this image. Are you able to see this?
No, we don't see that yet.
Okay, hold on. Let me reshare my screen. Okay. One more. Hold that for that. There we go. Now you should see it. So in their plan, they provided several elevations, which are all varying. Um, I think they provided, I think twenty-two different elevations and committed to varying elevations for each, um, building as they are laid out in the project. Um, the next item in that list.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, Andre, could you go back? My, my screen sent me back to my desktop, so I missed that view.
Okay, I'm sorry. Let, let, let me pull it back up for you. One second. There they are. These are the different elevations that they provided. And here's another sheet of elevation. There's like three sheets of elevations. Are you able to see them?
Yeah, sorry. I muted myself again. Um, so this is kind of what I was talking about in the last, in the last meeting is it's the same building. Like, I don't really consider those like vari, variations of the facade. Like, if you go back to that first page, I mean, it's, eh, it's really just the same building over and over again, maybe a different color of paint or something, but.
I, unfortunately, I'm not able to, um, articulate the details of each elevation, but, um, I think the, I'm not sure if the applicant had registered or is online. I think they are. Um, and they may be able to speak to, in more detail to it. I was just trying to go through the list of things that at least we found, but I would venture to say that the applicant probably needs to, um, speak to the details of whether or not these elevations are different. But I'm just providing what they provided to us.
Right, I understand. I just, that's kind of the thing when you drive through the other phases. It's like, I'm, I mean, maybe that Boca Raton is like super popular and it's just like over and over and over again, like the same house.
Yeah, there's two pages. So some are two stories, some are single stories, some have porches. I mean, they have different variations as far as the title, anyway.
Sure. So is there anything in our approvals that, I mean, so basically they have, let's say they have twenty different facades, but it's really more like ten, you know, like with just a little tweak here and there. I mean, so if, is there any way to make sure there's a variation? Cause just because they have it on the plan, doesn't mean that the variation makes it into the development?
So
You know, like everybody who comes in says, oh, I really like siesta. And so there's forty-seven siestas.
I understand. So, um, right, what's in front of the council tonight, obviously, is to approve the final plat and to require those, a requirement for variation would be something that would normally be done as part of the PUD, the Final Master Plan Approval. However, the applicant, uh, is always able to proffer what it is that you are hoping they will do. And so I will, will leave it up to the, of the applicant to respond to that question as to whether they want to agree to limit the types of products that are offered or to establish some standard for variation that, you know, you can, you can have the same design that's on either side of the same product or, you know, whatever variation you think is appropriate.
Okay, before we, before we talk to the applicant, can we go through the remaining item?
Absolutely. Okay, so the next item is the garage setbacks. And their driveways are at least twenty-five feet in length and therefore meets the minimum requirement for at least four parking spaces per unit. Um, of course, the requirement that we have in our code today is four point five spaces per unit. Again, that's something that the applicant can speak to as to whether or not there's additional common areas in the project that would allow for additional, um, one half space or one space per two homes. I can verify that that can be done, but they can probably speak to that. The next item had to do with single, uh, tree requirements and they have provided that each unit has two trees per lot. Minimum gross floor area, they are providing a minimum of fourteen hundred and fifty square feet. Um, air conditioner and condensing unit, they have a provision in their plan that says they'll all be staggered a minimum of ten feet from the adjacent units.
And Andre, on that item, is that something that is a part of a checklist on our, um, final inspections after the house is built?
Well, it's already on their plan. I mean,
Yeah, just in, in practice, after it gets built, we just gotta make sure that it actually gets built that way.
Right, yes, because we, we have, um, it would be more, more likely on the construction plans that show those requirements as part of their notes. So yes, I mean, we can, I can obviously get with the, um, building official and put that as a checklist item that inspectors will check for.
Perfect.
Um, then the next item is, has to do with property maintenance. Um, property allocated in the lot shall be maintained by the private property association. And then there's also a provision for, um, street trees. Of course, it's only at the entrance of cultural roads that has street trees. So those are the list of items that we would typically ask for projects to ensure that they, they include. Any questions?
Uh, Mayor, it's okay. It's Askew, question?
Mr. Askew, please.
So how would the, um, when was this actually officially approved and to pass over the four point five parking spots?
Um, this project was approved in twenty seventeen. So it was just prior to when we started asking for four point five parking spaces. That started in twenty eighteen.
It started in twenty seventeen. I remember asking for stuff like that, but I'm not sure how this one slipped through, but, um.
Well, the P, uh, just by the way, the, the, the Final Master Plan was approved prior to that. The Final Master Plan was approved, I wanna say it was twenty sixteen or earlier because it was part of the, the Nova Road annexations. So it was probably longer. And I actually apologize in the last presentation that it was on that list.
I, I would assume officially, uh, approved by the county, I would assume.
Okay, you have anything else? Is the, uh, is the applicant here?
Mayor, I have, um, six that have registered as the applicant.
Whoever would, who would like to speak first?
Sure. Uh, this is Jim McNeil, Mr. Mayor. I'm a counsel for Lennar Homes and I have, um, Lane Register from Lennar with us, hopefully on the line as well. Um, thank you for, uh, meeting tonight on this, uh, to try and address the two questions that came up on the, the parking space thing. I think as, as the staff had indicated, uh, this was approved, uh, prior to those new requirements in place. Um, I, I, I think we've got plenty of parking in the neighborhood. We've got twenty-five foot setbacks. We've got a pretty good sized driveway as well. We've got probably more room there than just two spaces. So we ask you to keep that in mind uh, when you're, you know, when you're thinking about that issue. Um, it's a pretty large project, so we've got a, a, you know, pretty significant areas to park as well. So I, I don't, I don't, we, we don't view the neighborhood as being, you know, tighter, constrained in, in that aspect. Um, with respect to the, the architectural variation, um, we're, you know, we're complying with all the approvals and requirements, uh, on that aspect. I can't speak to, um, the, the, whi, whi, which homes are, are planned for phases three and four and um, what that style is, if they're two story or one story. Um, uh, Lane Register from Lennar will, will probably have to pipe in and, and speak to that a little bit. Generally, though, that gets very difficult to try and, uh, articulate that because that's a varying, it's a, it, the process varies depending on who the customer is, how big their family is, what their lifestyle is. Do they want a front porch? Do they not want a front porch? You know, what, what's their, what, what is their architectural preference? You know, some people like stone, some people like, you know, more of a Florida look. It just, so there's a lot of variables that go into that and the builders typically, you know, need some flexibility. Um, in, in that regard. Uh, so I, I would leave it at that. And if, if Lane is with us, if he could, uh, maybe expand on that a little bit more.
Lane, would you like to speak? You need to unmute, unmute your mic. Thank you.
Alright, yeah, this is Lane. This is Mark McDonald. I'm the director of land for Lennar Homes. Uh, appreciate you guys taking the, uh, opportunity to discuss this plat and review this, uh, with us. So on the architectural uh, elevations of all of our homes, you know, the homeowner has the ability to pick their floor plan on their home site and, uh, pick the elevation they want. They pick the color. We do restrict, uh, in our HOA declarations and just our basic marketing and sales strategy that no two homes next to each other can have the same elevation or the same color. So next to each other and across the street is restricted just by our normal processes. Uh, but like, uh, Jim McNeil said, you know, it, it is up to the homeowner, you know, the buyer of what they want and what they purchase. So we have some restrictions, but in certain cases, you know, some, some floor plans, some elevations are more popular than others. So they get selected more often. Uh, but, but in a free market economy, that's, that's kind of the buyer's choice is they can pick what they want because they're buying it. Uh, so we have a very, you know, broad range of plans and elevations that are available and we let it up to the customer of what they wanna pick. Uh, as it relates to the parking spaces, uh, this PUD was approved originally in two thousand thirteen. Uh, there was a PUD amendment that was done early in two thousand seventeen that was approved by the city. And the construction plans, the site development plan for phase three and four was approved as recently as October of two thousand nineteen. So, you know, now we're at the final stage where this development is built. Um, it meets all approvals that we've been giving, given to date. And now we're in the final stage of plotting it. Um, and the questions that are being asked are very, you know, relevant questions. Uh, but really, those are more development approval questions that would have been handled at the PUD and the SDP stage, uh, not at plotting a community that is completely constructed. So I welcome further comment.
Councilman Matheny, you have any questions?
Yeah, so, um, I know there's like new people here than were on the call the last meeting, but, um, you know, my concern was I drove through the adjoining neighborhood that's like the earlier phases and so there's all kinds of cars parked on the streets. You have to weave in between the cars, getting down the road, um, which is why we started that four and a half parking spaces, trying to keep, you know, the cars in the driveways and in the garages. And then also when I drove down the street, I was like, goodness, it's like the exact same house over and over, over again. Like to me is like, I mean, without me getting a magnifying glass, I couldn't discern the difference driving down the street, you know? So I, I mean, I appreciate the fact that, you know, the buyer has a choice, but, um, you know, like when we look at the elevations there, like you've got whatever it's called, the Rio de Janeiro house and there's four elevations, but they're like pretty much exactly the same. So and that's my concern. It's like, we want high-end development in the city and the parking is just out of control. I don't, I don't know what happens these days. It's like, I guess there's more cars per house than, um, twenty years ago. So, um, you know, I'd like to see if there's something we could do. I mean, there's some modifications that could be made to get more parking. I mean, to say that there's enough parking, I would disagree because I drove through the neighborhood and there's people all over the place. So, um, is there anything that you guys could offer to help with some of the, the varying, the outside of the homes? I get it. You probably have a master plan in your model that says these are the, here's lot X and these are the six products that fit on lot X and then you let the person pick, but I, I mean, it's pretty much cookie cutter looking development when I went. six products that fit on lot X, and then you let the person pick, but I I mean, it's pretty much cookie cutter looking development when I went through the earlier phases.
Uh, well, I can respond to that, um, as as far as parking, you know, we can't we can't monitor behavior, so by offering, you know, all two-car garages and having, you know, twenty-five foot setback to the garage, uh having two spaces in the in the driveway, there there is ample parking for every home in the community. Uh, the, whether somebody chooses to park in the garage or not is a behavior that is hard for a developer or builder to to manage. Uh, we do have HOA restrictions, we can put, we can put more emphasis uh on the association to manage uh, you know, parking violations on the street, we can do overnight parking restrictions and things like that uh through our management company and and onsite uh community management. But as far as adding more parking in a development that is already developed, uh that's, you know, it's basically just not an option. We have uh a site that was approved and we built it for their approved plans, so uh we will manage it uh through the association and try to limit, you know, how many cars are parking on the street. As far as the uh architectural elevations and the floor plans that are offered, uh what we are building in the community is on the approved P U D. Uh, the exhibits that that Andre was was showing on the screen, uh we can definitely uh, you know, try to vary those up and restrict uh more which elevations are next to each other. Uh, but again, it's the it's the buyer's choice on what they wanna, what they wanna build on their on their home sites, and we're building, you know, what was previously approved.
You have any other input, Councilor Matheny?
I don't.
Councilor Ask You?
I guess I gotta ask the question, um, you know, in the other community over there, I I think you you're starting to run into some safety issues with cars parked on both sides of the road and getting a fire truck down there that's an amply make it down there without um destruction of private property. Uh, that's where we start questioning um poor parking spots, nobody seems to wanna park in their garage, so they tend to park on the roads and it deems us a little bit of a safety challenge for police and our fire, probably not the police so much, but definitely fire. So is there a way to address it in that way? In in uh the communities that you manage, has anyone ever made that work, where an HOA is, goes after the parking? And that actually works perfectly, because I haven't seen it work here except for Camelot, which is um a closed park um area anyway, so if you can give me some guidance and is is this actually work? I mean, I get it, you're gonna build it, you're gonna prop it, you're gonna do, you're moving down the line, um but you're gonna leave us with this, and I I really don't want a mess over there, um. So if there's some way to address some of the parking, um I would appreciate it. If you just to say, yeah, there's ample parking, I'm here to tell you, I've seen so many of these things built, and everyone coming and telling us, oh, this is ample parking, twenty-five foot setback, the only reason we do that is because we have so many pickup trucks here, so. Um, I, you know, something with the parking would be nice.
Sure, I can address that, um, like I said, the HOA is uh, is, you know, the the best solution as far as uh managing the parking on street. Um, there is uh, i- it can be done effectively, is is everything a hundred percent effective? Absolutely not. Uh, but restricting parking on the street and making it an HOA violation is is easy to manage with itself. Uh, I live in a community myself that that has that requirement, and if you park on the street overnight, you get a big sticker on your car, if you do it more than once, you get a fine, so the HOA can absolutely manage that.
Do you have any other questions, Councilor Ask You? You know, you know, I find this frustrating, the, you know, here we have a a developer who has done everything according to the code and the guidelines uh that we have required of them uh previously, uh including the parking, I know, I live in a subdivision, um Stevus Plantation, and uh a lot of the houses, you can tell, are similar, but all the façades are different. But the parking is an issue there too, it's like, you know, uh going out and trying to buy a three hundred thousand dollar home, if you're a young couple, many of them end up living with their parents. And uh you got young people that are staying at home longer and longer and longer, most of them end up with cars. And uh, you know, probably most garages end up for storage, but even if you put cars in the garage and then cars in the parkway, it becomes a major obstacle, it's much easier to park your car on the in the driveway or or on the street in front of your house than it is to have to go move your car to let somebody out who's parked in a garage way, uh in a garage. And so, uh, you know, unless we uh start changing the width of the streets, you know, fire only parking on one side, you're gonna continue having this problem, because families are getting larger and uh things are issued, but, you know, I I understand the developers frustration, you know, when you've met all the guidelines that they're supposed to meet with their approvals previously, and now we're trying to change them, I I'm sure that's frustrating. Councilor Trace?
Uh, thank you, um, I kind of echo your sentiment about uh moving the goalpost on on someone um halfway through the game or all the way through the game. Um, not really the biggest fan of that, but um there's some things we've been, some some common themes we've been talking about for the past uh at least a year since I've been on council is residential building standards. Um, I know we've we've started that process, where are we on on enacting um residential building standards, architectural standards?
Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Anderson, would you speak to that?
Okay, well, we'll follow up um i- in a bit, and then um a a lot of communities ha- have gotten to the the point where as uh the the neighborhood goes through the planning and design stage, y- you plan out where guest parking is on streets and where it's allowed on streets, and everywhere else you have no parking signs on the one side or or both sides, if it if it's coming close to corners and painting curbs, so I I think that's something we need to look into on a lot of these communities moving forward. Um, is just making sure that road widths are wide enough to fit the um fire apparatus through there, um, you know, i- if there is an issue. Um, so that's something I think we should look at en- enacting in the future, I know we can um mimic a lot of uh other municipalities uh code about that.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak?
Yes, you may, Mr. Anderson, may I speak now?
I I wasn't sure if um Councilmember Trace had asked me a question, I was, I was um muted at the moment. But just in response, in in response to your um suggestion about future design, we have been doing that, the projects that have been coming in, we have been requiring them to show designated parking spaces on the roadway and where where that common area, such as where the the mailboxes might be located or the clubhouse, so that we can provide adequate visitor parking for those newer communities that are coming, so just to let you know that we are addressing.
Mr. Anderson?
And I just wanna remind the council that what stage you're at here, I think it's been mentioned or it's been talked around a little bit, but just so you clearly understand, we are at approval of the final plat, and uh basically it's presented to you because the city engineer and the city planning department and all the staff have looked at it and said the plat is submitted, meets the requirements of the code and the requirements of the approval of the project. So at this point, the city council, under the terms of the code, has the option of approving the final plat as presented or requiring additional information or revisions. So I wanna make sure that we s- we we stick to that and and we deal with it, so at this point, uh since it meets the minimum requirements of the code, it meets the minimum requirements of the approved plat, I'm sorry, the approved entitlements for the project, uh really, the option of the city council right now is to decide whether they need more information or they have some revision that is plat-related that they wish to offer as part of this, as part of this process.
Thanks, sir.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, you may, Mr. Sturgis.
I just wanted to acknowledge Councilmember Trace's question, and I will get him to answer and follow up on the res- residential design standards, I know we're working on them, I'll get him to, I'll get the entire council on time.
And I'm sorry, Mayor, may may make one more comment?
Yes, you may.
Forgot to, so as you know, there's only four council members present, uh so uh to the extent that uh uh this item would would uh not pass, or or even if a motion was made and it was not approved or was a two-two, then that essentially go forward as a denial. Uh, so I just wanna point that out to you, and as we've done in the past, I wanna make sure the applicants are aware of that, in the event that they wish to uh uh, if they wish at some point they'd wanna move this matter forward to when there would be a full council present to have a uh have a full vote on it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Matheny, you have any other inputs you want to make on this, on this item? Any other input from the council on this, have we ended our discussion then?
Um, I would like to vote, I would like to vote on it separately, though.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve item U from the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? I'll make that a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Ask You?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
No.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Special Carries, three to one.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone else in the council chambers to discuss anything else on the consent agenda?
No, I don't have anyone else.
Thank you, then could I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve items A through T of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Trace, a second from Deputy Mayor Matheny for the approval of items A through T. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Ask You?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Special Carries, four to zero.
Give me a second. That brings us to public hearings. Madam Clerk, will you please read item number one?
Final public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero nine. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Saint Cloud, Florida, establishing the proposed property known as Old Hickory and further described herein and recognizing the Old Hickory Community Development District created and chartered by the Uniform General Law, the Uniform Community Development District Act of Florida, Chapter one ninety, Florida statutes two thousand one and thereafter, acknowledging the uniform district charter and express in sections one ninety point zero zero six dash one ninety point zero four one Florida statutes, and as referenced and provided by section one ninety point zero zero four subsection four. Florida statutes and confirming section one eighty nine point zero thirty one subsection three. Florida statutes establishing the district on property proposed in this petition and designating the initial members of the district, board of supervisors, designating the proposed land area within which the district may ma- may manage and finance its basic infrastructure systems, facilities, services, improvements, and project, providing for survivability and effective date.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may we recognize?
Mr. Anderson, may you please speak?
Thank you, this is Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This, as the clerk said, is the petition in final public hearing for the Old Hickory Community Development District. Um, it meets the requirements of the Florida statutes for a petition, and um the applicant is in fact requesting to establish a community development district for residential development. I won't go through all the details, but generally it's for the purpose of uh planning and finance and acquiring, constructing, operate, maintain various infrastructure services within the community, as you see on the screen. And um as I said, it meets the criteria for establishment pursuant to chapter one ninety four zero five, one A two of the Florida statutes. Um, they did receive written dissent by all the landowners, and they have an initial board established pursuant to the requirements of the Florida statutes, chapter one ninety point zero five, one A three. And this petition for establishing a community development district is consistent with our strategic plan goals for growth management and infrastructure. And staff recommends approval of ordinance two thousand nine, two thou- two thousand twenty zero nine, subject to the adoption of an interlocal agreement, which was discussed at the last meeting, and for which staff had the opportunity to review. The interlocal agreement will include, or does include provisions related to how they will provide these additional enhancements and amenities above and beyond the minimum core requirements, as well as identify the different infra- infrastructure that will be maintained by the C D D, if at all. Um, city council's requested action is for adoption of ordinance two thousand twenty zero nine. The applicant is present and has a presentation that they'd like to share with you. Then the question will have to be to them.
Thank you, I'll uh entertain the applicant at this point, if you'd like to speak, please do so. Please take your name and address for the record.
Mayor, Ms. Carpenter is in the council chamber.
Thank you.
Hi. Sorry, I have a hard time speaking with this on. Um, I decided after the technical issues at the last meeting, I thought I should come in person, so thank you very much, and we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all again. Um, we put together a presentation to sort of go through the history of the C D D, the process, and where we are, and to show the responses to the various issues that came up at the prior meetings. Um, first, I'm Jan Carpenter, representing the petitioner of Lennar Homes, uh in the establishment of the C D D, which is a government. We had the first reading, which was an advertised public hearing in the courts of chapter one ninety back in April ninth. And as uh Mr. Anderson said, the statutory requirements have all been satisfied, and staff has agreed. The uh, the key issues that we are sort of dealing with, and wanna make sure the council understands, is why is the C D D a preferable form of government over an HOA? And the questions specifically are what enhancements will the C D D offer the city and the landowners in the Old Hickory development? And then the requirement for an interlocal agreement, and I'll just clarify, the request is a petitioner's agreement, which includes includes the interlocal agreement, because the petitioner is is the party who would sign it and provide the enhancements, and the C D D would then take on own and construct and then maintain those through the interlocal agreement after things are constructed. Next page, please. Um, after the first reading, the council members and city staff asked for the petitioner's agreement, interlocal agreement, to assure that the enhancements are incorporated in the project. Staff and council have reviewed those agreements, given us a few comments, which we responded, and now they include the enhancements as requested by the council. Slide, please. Um, and quickly, I'll go through this, because I think most of you are very familiar with the C D D, but important to note that the C D D is a true government. We often hear quasi-government and other statements like that, and that's not true, it's a true government. So there's sunshine, public records laws, ethics laws, and this is a great protection for the landowners, and they don't have to wonder what's happening to the records or their money or the operations. Uh, there were many financial constraints, C D D budgets are safeguarded, and the money is uh the assessments are collected on the tax bills, which assures the city that there's gonna be funds to maintain the improvements, as we talked about, I think, with most of you. Things like stormwater management and the important things that if an HOA runs out of funds or isn't collecting funds, those can cause public hazards. Uh, the C D D can access FEMA relief in emergency. At hurricane time, many of C D Ds have collected funds to help treat, knock down trees, clean up debris. They also have offered assistance to other local governments, such as the cities. Cities have to comply with bidding and purchasing laws, which provides cost savings, and again, provides an open environment, so the residents are aware of these doing the work to maintain improvements. Cities have annual audits that go to the state, C D Ds can issue taxes and funds, which is how the greater level of amenities for homes of similar prices can be offered, as compared to neighborhoods without C D Ds. for homes of similar prices can be offered, as compared to neighborhoods without CDDs. An important thing is there's no burden placed on the city or other residents. Only the folks in the Old Hickory development will pay and be able to benefit from the CDD. And the CDD is the excellent, long-term maintenance entity compared to HOAs, from the aspect of the funds are all collected on the tax roll, and the funds are a government. And we have all the open and sunshine, and the importance of the government maintaining CDDs and maintaining the improvements. Now, on the next slide, one of the questions that came up are what improvements would the government, the CDD, be offering in this neighborhood? And the enhancements beyond the land development code that are already in the approved PUD. And similar to the last conversation, this PUD was of 2016 ordinance, so this has been around for quite a while. But the enhancements beyond the code are the recreational, active recreational amenities, a pool and cabana, restrooms, parking playgrounds, a large open space where you play fields for soccer, multipurpose fields, passive recreational amenities, an eight-foot-wide pedestrian path and walking trail for residents along the east side of Hickory Grove Road. Enhanced transportation connectivity, there's access points to the school site between the internal roadway connection to Nolte Road, between the Gramercy Farms PUD and the Southern Ryan subdivision on the other side. School citing, there's a 15-acre school site provided for the use of the elementary school, and as noted, the roadway connections will help ease traffic off of major roads. Enhanced open space, 46.1% of the developed area is open space, and we actually checked that, just to make sure that was a correct number. Enhanced property buffers, 10 feet, plants. Enhanced right-of-way buffers, again, six medium to small trees for 100 feet, and it goes on in detail. And I think we provided that to you by letter. And on the next page, the next question that had come up from the city council was, what will the developer do in this case beyond what was already approved? And the developer says, well, yes, we will offer even more at this point. And one thing just to note, the PUD approved 750 units of the development, only has construction plans for 451. So, that alone is a big improvement and benefit to the city. The developer in this case, the petitioner, has agreed to enhancements beyond the approved PUD, and these aren't yet in construction plans. But street trees providing along the right-of-way of Old Hickory, at least one tree per lot, two trees on corner lots. Adding an overlook pavilion with picnic tables and grills that'll overlook the large lake adjacent to the pool and cabana tract. A dog park and fence with weight stations, benches and a watering station, which seems to be the most popular thing that the CDDs are looking at, developers are doing for new neighborhoods. Additional boulevard landscaping, additional understory trees along the east and west sides of Hickory Grove Road, and the north side of Surry Springway, and then additional Nolte Road landscaping. Additional understory trees and plantings on the north and south side of Nolte Road, and that's a benefit not only for the residents, but also for all the folks in the City of St. Cloud who go on Nolte Road every day. So, those are substantial improvements that have been added since the discussion and the first reading. And then, next page, please. The petitioner's an interlocal agreement. What those agreements are, are agreements, the first is the petitioner's agreement, where the petitioner agrees, we are going to add, through a contractual agreement with the city, we are going to add these additional improvements and enhancements. There are certain enhancements that will be maintained by the CDD. We're asked specifically about the sidewalks and stormwater tracks. The petitioner's agreement requires the petitioner, the home builder, to provide additional information to the residents to make sure anyone who purchases in the community understands the CDD structure, and how it's different from an HOA, and what the various responsibilities and obligations are. The interlocal agreement, which would be signed once the CDD has its first meeting and starts, will provide extra public notice, again, to provide additional information, makes sure that educated home buyers are in the district. And then, the CDD will also provide enhanced notice requirements, putting extra notice in the public records, providing notice to homeowners of the annual meeting schedules, things that aren't required by statute, some things that are required by statute, but just making sure that the homeowners understand the benefits of the CDD and how they're paying for their improvements. And on the next slide, it is just a schematic of the pool and the cabana area you'll see past the pool, also showing the playground and the open space. The pool has the various restrooms and amenities there. You can see some of the trees. On the next slide, a schematic of an entry sign showing some of the enhanced landscaping. And again, that's what it's intended to look like, to show the benefit of this type of community, and what a CDD can offer in the community, over the HOA structure. And finally, on the last page, the CDD has offered enhancements, you know, well beyond the PUD, and in response to the request of the council, the street trees, the lake overlook, the dog park, enhanced landscaping, and enhanced Nolte Road, road and right-of-way landscaping. So, with that, we request approval of the ordinance in establishing the CDD. And I'm here to answer questions. We also have some representatives from Lennar who has additional questions about the development.
Mr. Mayor, your mic is muted.
You're muted, Mayor. Thank you. Does anyone else in the chamber, besides the applicant, that would like to speak to this issue?
There's no one in the chamber, but we do have several that have registered.
Okay.
We have, so we have Nicole Smith, Patrick Bowman, Lane Register, Martha Donald.
Is Nicole Smith available online?
No, she is not. Mr. Register is the only one currently, Mr. Register is the only one currently online.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this is Lane Register. We're here to answer any questions that the council has.
Thank you. All right. Does the council have any questions you'd like to ask? Councilmember Matheny?
I do. Thank you. One of your bullet points that you had on there is you said no burden placed on city residents. That was one of your bullet points. Can you specify what burden you've removed from the city residents by having a CDD?
The fact that there's going to be increased landscaping along the boulevard, along the public roads, that will be maintained by the CDD. So, it'll be a benefit to the city and the city residents, and no cost to anyone outside the development.
Okay. I don't know that, I don't know that I would classify that as no burden placed on city residents, but in the bullet points that you had, that you said you're going to take care of the sidewalk and the stormwater, but you're not offering to take care of the roads?
That's, yes, that's correct. The roads have been, in the plat, had talked about those being dedicated to the city, and that was accepted by the city, and that has been in the past approvals. The reason why CDDs generally don't take care of roads is that the gas taxes that folks pay when they buy gasoline, the state collects, and those go to the counties and cities. CDDs do not collect any of that. And the few CDDs where we do represent CDDs that do own roads, residents get kind of upset, because they say, hey, we're paying taxes to the city, we pay taxes for our gas tax, but then we still are taking care of our roads. So, that has not been put into this particular development, and generally is not included.
So, you know, to the other council members, you know, when you drive around this city and surrounding areas, and you pass by these really nice neighborhoods that have the big berm, the big landscaped berm, when you're driving down, you know, like Narcisse Road, you pass by Turtle Creek, and you've got this big landscaped berm with, you know, where you're not seeing all the houses in there, and then the neighborhood, I'm always bad as a Twin Oaks, Twin Lakes, whatever that neighborhood is, the 55 and up community, when you pass by that, they've got this big berm and landscaping, and I really feel like that would help if we started requiring that berm to like, you know, change the view sheds, that you're not seeing the back of all these houses, and especially like, even when they vary the front of the house, the back of the house all looks exactly the same. It's like exactly the same shape with a, like a cutout for the porch. I think, for me, I feel like that would, you know, increase the aesthetics in the community. I know they're saying they're enhancing the landscaping along Nolte, but I would like it to have a, I would like to see a berm, a berm with the plantings on it, similar to what we have at Turtle Creek. And we did another development off of Narcisse Road with that as well. Was it Center Lake that we required that? And so, that's something I'd like to do, is, I know they're saying they have enhanced plantings, but I'd really like to see a berm, like obstructing the view into the community from Nolte Road, and the internal roads, too. I don't have the layouts all in my, I don't know what the layout all is in the community. But this development, to me, is kind of weird, because I feel like at the 11th hour, like you're saying, these approvals have already happened, but we didn't know you were trying to do a CDD until the 11th hour. Like, we've done all these approvals, and then it's like, now we want to do a CDD. I mean, maybe staff knew, but I didn't know. So, you know, I think that's an issue as well. Like, we've kind of done all the approvals, and then now you come in and say you want to do a CDD. But would you guys be willing to do, like, berms with the landscaping on it, to like, help provide screening into the community?
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Matheny, this is Lane Register. So, hey, this is Lane Register of Lennar. So, yeah, I'll speak to that. So, right now, at the stage we're at, so this, this community is essentially at substantial completion. So, out on Nolte Road, we have a 10-foot buffer, putting a berm in that buffer. It would essentially be impractical at this point. We are planning to install a fence along the entire length of Nolte Road, on both sides of Nolte Road for our Phase 1 and future Phase 4.
I mean, a wall would be better. A fence isn't very, you know, a fence looks bad in a couple of years.
Okay. Well, yeah, I, I hear you. We can, we can absolutely do a masonry wall.
You're agreeing to a masonry wall, is that correct?
That is correct.
Any of the other councilmembers have any questions or comments at this point? Councilmember Askew?
No, I don't have anything to add, a bit outside the realm of the CDD approval.
Okay. Mr. Mizares?
I was just going to point out, if that's something that the, that the council wants to move forward with, that there is the agreement, the petitioner's agreement, that ultimately goes into interlocal agreement that has enhancements in it, so that could be added to that enhancement, that agreement as an additional enhancement.
And I do believe those improvements would be able to be funded with CDD proceeds as well. So, that could be something paid for by the CDD as a benefit.
Yes, that's correct.
Any other councilmembers to ask you? Do you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Is, do we have a particular height we're looking for in this particular masonry fence?
The residential stuff is limited to six feet.
At least six feet, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We would typically construct it at six feet.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other questions or concerns from council? Could I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2020-09 with the future inclusion of a masonry wall along both sides of Nolte, where the loss back up to Nolte Road.
A motion from Councilmember Trace. Do I have a second? Second, Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trace. And Ms. Carpenter, thank you. Moving us to item number two. Madam Clerk, will you please read that?
First public hearing for ordinance number 2020-15, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending chapter 44 Utilities, Article 2 Sanitary Sewer System, Sections 44-113 Sanitary Sewer Account, Name, Amending Article 4 Portable Water Section 44-332, Portable Water Facility Account, Name, Amending Article 7, Stormwater Sections 44-536, Billing and Payments and Penalties, Amending Chapter 22 Emergencies, Article 2 Division 2 Section 22-35, Schedule of Usage Fees, and Chapter 36 Solid Waste, Article 2 Section 36-36, Initiation of Solid Waste Collection Fees, Clarifying Certain Procedural Requirements for Establishing the Ministerial Portable Water, Sanitary Sewer, Stormwater EMS, and Solid Waste Utility Account as Set by Resolution, Providing for Survivability, Conflicts, Codification, and Effective Date.
Have some little staff to speak?
Sure. This is Marjorie Craig, the Environmental Utilities Director.
Thank you.
So, currently, the city has stormwater EMS and solid waste residential accounts that are not associated with a water meter, and are, and they're only billed for those three services. And those utility accounts are usually master metered with a master water meter. So, that's typically a duplex, apartment complex, or multi-unit buildings. So, this method does not allow us, or the city, to enforce the requirement. And so, what we're proposing is to combine the EMS solid waste and stormwater billing to the water bill, the master meter, and which will be billed to the owner, as opposed to the individual people living in the individual units, much like we are in our individual houses. So, it'll be in the name of the owner. So, it'll be much more efficient, and reduce the delinquency of the accounts.
Do you have anything else?
Who's the staff recommends approval?
Ms. Craig, it's good to have you here. Good to have you on our staff. Thanks for being at our first council meeting and speaking.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone in the audience, or has requested to speak to this item, Madam Clerk?
I do not have anyone in the chambers, and I don't have anyone registered.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion or motion by council?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion from Deputy Mayor Matheny. We have a second from Councilmember Trace. Was that correct?
Correct.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll for the approval of item number 2020-15?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please read item number three?
First public hearing and introduction for ordinance number 2020-19, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for local vendor preference for ostensible accounting individuals, firms, or companies with regard to procurement of products, materials, and services by the City of St. Cloud, providing that qualified local vendors shall enter, shall certain, in certain instances, shall be provided. A local vendor preference with regard to the net bid price for the local vendor is otherwise fully qualified to meet the city requirements, providing that all other provisions of the city procurement policy and applicable laws shall remain in effect and apply to the governed purchases by the city, providing for survivability, conflicts, and effective date, and automatic repeal.
Mayor Flores will be speaking on this, if you'll allow her.
Okay, please, please do so.
Hi, good evening. Leslie Flores, Procurement Services Director. Ordinance number 2020-19 would be for the establishment of a local preference. The City of St. Cloud, previous ordinance 2015-20 established a local preference that was automatically repealed in March of 2017, and currently, And currently there is a need to promote business enterprises that own property, operate businesses and offices and employ individuals and pay taxes within Osceola County. Ordinance twenty twenty dash nineteen would establish a local preference for all business services except as may be exempted by applicable state and federal law. Uh, the local preference applies to Osceola County persons, firms and our corporations, which meet one or more of the established criteria. Um, they would have to have their headquarters, manufacturing facility or locally owned franchise located in or having a street address within the legal boundaries of Osceola County for at least a year. Um, post office boxes do not qualify as a verifiable business address. Um, if they employ thirty percent or more full-time employees whose primary residence is located within the legal boundaries of Osceola County. Um, if they employ less than fo- five full-time employees and utilize subcontractors to provide products or services, then sixty percent of those subs must be qualified local subcontractors. And the owner or principal of the business would have to maintain his or her primary residence within the legal boundaries of Osceola County. Uh, the local preference results in the qualified local vendor being awarded a contract at the amount of the lowest submitted, submitted bid if the local vendor's bid is the next lowest bid and the bid amount is within the applicable percentage. Uh, the recommendation I would like to make tonight, if you look at the preference section of the ordinance that is presented, um, there is a breakdown of percentages based on bid prices. Um, and that was in, in place previously through two thousand seventeen. I would like to recommend that we make it a straight five percent so that we are consistent with Osceola County and the city of St. Cloud. Uh, if you have any questions, staff recommendation with the approval of ordinance twenty twenty dash nineteen.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there anyone registered to speak to this item?
I do not have anyone registered and no one in the audience.
Thank you very much. Do we have discussion, a motion by council? Councilmember Matheny?
Um, I, I thank you, uh, to procurement for this agenda, um, actually this whole agenda that we have. You guys have like really been super busy and rocking it right now. Um, I, I agree with her recommendation to be consistent with the other communities. I did want to point out to everyone, um, that, you know, we can't do the local vendor preference on a lot of projects because if it has state or federal or grant funding, you can't, you can't do the local vendor preference. But, um, you know, I, I agree with the recommendation to go with the five percent and I'll make a motion if no one else has, uh, any comments.
Do we have any other comments from council? Councilmember Trace?
I'll, um, second that and I agree, this is a good, um, uh, all Steve have and just want to point out that it won't cost us any more. They could just match that bid. So it doesn't, it doesn't actually cost the city more if they're the, the next guy said they can match, uh, down to that, um, that lowest bid. So, um, also I can, uh, Deputy Mayor, anything is motion?
Mr. Mayor, before you-
Yes, sir, go ahead. Mr. Mizares.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point out, and this is, and just for a point of information more than anything, in case as you're out in the community, you hear about this down the road. Some of the unique things that's been going on with these preferential, these preference, local preference ordinances that other communities will start adopting an ordinance that basically says if you come from a community that has a local preference, then when you bid on our projects, uh, as a member of another community, they essentially will, lack a better word, penalize the bidder in the local bid process. So we have to manage that and watch that, uh, carefully, which is why this is not going to be codified. Part of the reason why this wouldn't be codified in the code, so that it would be in place on the idea that it could be removed if it deemed that it wasn't appropriate or wasn't needed. Thank you.
Thank you. So any other discussion from council? If not, we have a motion from Deputy Mayor Matheny for the adoption of, uh, this item with five percent amendment. We have a second from Councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Big Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Brings us to item number four. Madam Clerk?
Public hearing for resolution number twenty twenty dash zero eighty-seven R. A resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, amending resolution number twenty, two thousand nineteen dash one sixty-nine R, which adopted the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget for the city of St. Cloud, finding the city manager has cert- certified their fi- prior year fund balances and/or current revenues available in the budget for additional projects and programs in the various funds, not included in the original budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include additional funds in the, in the various, funding in the various funds and making supplemental appropriations within the funds.
Thank you very much. Mr. and Ms. Colazo, are you speaking to this item?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. Budget amendment four under resolution number twenty twenty zero eighty-seven R. First item, um, from the OUC St. Cloud Business Development Fund, we will be increasing by fifty thousand dollars in order for the Economic Recovery and Stimulus Plan Grant Program for the nonprofit businesses as it relates to COVID nineteen. Secondary item also coming from the OUC St. Cloud Business Development Fund for two hundred thousand will be for the Economic Recovery and Stimulus Plan, uh, for the grant assistance program for small businesses, again, as it relates to COVID nineteen. Third item for the third phase would be from the OUC St. Cloud Business Development Fund, yet again, from prior year fund balance and increase to expenditures at two hundred and fifty thousand for the post-recovery efforts for, as it relates to COVID nineteen. That is a total increase of five hundred thousand from the Business Development Fund. Third item will be coming from the Sewer Fund. We are increasing expenditures um, and decreasing contingency by a hundred and five thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine. This is for the rehab of the sanitary sewer laterals through the installation of a, a pipeliner and lateral seals. And this will be under project WW two thousand eight. Final item for budget number four will be an increase to the revenue, uh, and also the expenditures in recognition of twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars, which is grant funding provided by the CARES Act through the U.S. Department of Health, also known as HERSA, in order for the recovery of the cost for additional PPE necessary to respond for the, uh, confirmed COVID nineteen patients. This is being tracked under project PS two thousand eight. This is budget number, number four. After this budget amendment, it is the intention of the city to return back to the cyclical quarterly budget amendments, unless there is something mission critical that happens during this time. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. And this is your budget amendment number four for your approval. Staff recommends that.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone registered to speak to this item? Madam Clerk?
We have no one registered and no one in the audience.
Thank you very much. We'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Any questions? Councilmember Askew, are you wanting to speak?
Uh, no, motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, a motion from Councilmember Askew, a second from Deputy Mayor Matheny. Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Brings us to council action, item number one. Madam Clerk?
Resolution number twenty twenty dash zero eighty-two R. A resolution of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing, establishing the Economic Recovery and Stimulus Plan to provide financial and technical assistance to local businesses affected by COVID nineteen, making certain funds, providing for conflicts and providing an effective date.
Mr. Anderson?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to get this slide. There we go. Um, Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This is the first resolution two thousand twenty oh eighty-two R for the express purpose of approving the overall economic recovery stimulus plan. Um, this would be approving a, an overall plan in the amount of one point two five million dollars. Um, this plan that was presented to you before is, will be rolled out in three phases. Phase one would be in the first thirty days, phase two, thirty to ninety days, and phase three, which we would hope would be post-COVID nineteen, um, recovery efforts. As I said, it's for one point two five million dollars and we've been looking at multiple funding sources, one of which would be the OUC Business Retention Fund in the amount of five hundred thousand. And then the, um, second portion of that funding would come from, uh, the building fund and I'll talk about it in a second. So phase one would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the OUC fund, or fifty percent of the allocation for two specific grant programs and that's part of phase one. One part of it, two hundred thousand would be for the small business grant program and the second part would be for the nonprofit grant assistance in fifty thousand dollars. Phase two would be up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the building fund. And the discussion that was had at, at our last meeting was to look at what types of, um, fee waivers could be done to encourage development and we got a lot of input from the council and we are putting together a more detailed, uh, response to bring back to you for phase two, which would look at everything from what types of fee to wave to encourage development in the downtown. Deputy Mayor Matheny had mentioned that a few times and so we are definitely going to bring back a program that addresses all the concerns that were raised. Phase three of the program is what we consider post-COVID activities and we, at this point, we don't know how much assistance we, we can provide in phase one. So we don't want to use all of the funds upfront and find out that there were other businesses or areas that we neglected. And so we're wanting to do sort of a wait and see, go through the first phase, see how it assists local businesses and then follow up with, with phase three after we have seen, um, the, the benefits that are realized from phase one. Um, so this overall plan is consistent with our economic development, um, goals as well as growth management and staff recommends approval of resolution two, twenty twenty oh eighty-two R to establish the COVID nineteen Economic Recovery and Stimulus Plan. Happy to answer your questions.
Would you like to go ahead and speak to the next two items?
Sure, I, I can. Well, there's, yeah, I, I will. Let me, I lost my screen there for a second. I apologize. Who started him? I'm sorry about that.
Mr. Mizares?
Um, Mayor, I don't, I'm not sure the clerk read those items in, if we could do that before-
No, they didn't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Why don't we just go ahead and deal with the item number one then? Do we have any, anyone in the, uh, chamber or registered to speak to items, item number one?
No, we don't have anyone in the chambers or registered.
Do we have any discussion or motion by council? Councilmember Askew?
I give a motion to approve.
I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, you call the roll?
Can I have a comment first?
Yes, you may.
Um, I, I, I'm fine with the, the, the phase one and the phase three. I just, I still have some trepidation on the phase two. Um, so just, I, I really want to, uh, talk through that a lot more, um, before we just start, start waving fees for things that, um, might not be, uh, effective and efficient.
Well, I'm sure that's coming back. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, you call the roll?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Madam Clerk, will you read item number two?
Resolution number twenty twenty dash zero eighty-three R. Resolution of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing two grant assistance programs titled COVID nineteen nonprofit grant assistance and COVID nineteen small business grant program, which are considered phase one of the St. Cloud COVID nineteen Economic Recovery and Stimulus Plan, making certain fun- fundings, providing for conflicts and providing an effective date.
Mayor, may I speak?
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This is, um, resolution two thousand twenty oh eighty-three R for establishing and implementing phase one of the Economic Recovery and Stimulus Plan that you just approved. And it's for two specific grant programs. One is the nonprofit assistance grant, which I mentioned a minute ago, which is basically to help offset operational costs for nonprofits. It's allocated for fifty thousand dollars from the OUC fund and each nonprofit is eligible, or each eligible nonprofit agency would get up to five thousand dollars, um, funding. Then COVID nineteen small business grant program, again, also to help offset operational costs for business continuity and maybe also use for working capital. It is being funded for up to two hundred thousand dollars and each eligible business will receive up to ten thousand dollars. It is consistent with our economic development strategic plan goal and goal management strategic plan goal. And staff recommends approval of resolution two thousand twenty oh eighty-three R to create the two specific business assistance grant programs as part of phase one of the Economic Recovery Stimulus Plan. Have any questions?
Thank you. Is there anyone in the chamber or registered to speak to this item?
I do not have one, anyone in the chambers or registered.
Thank you very much. We have discussion, a motion by council.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty oh eighty-three R.
We have a motion, Councilmember Trace, a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Madam Clerk, will you read item number three?
Resolution number twenty twenty dash one twenty R. A resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, approving the use of five hundred thousand from the St. Cloud Orlando Utilities Commission Business Development and Customer Retention Fund created by the interlocal agreement of April twenty-five, nineteen ninety-seven for the city's use to fund the city's COVID nineteen Economic Recovery and Stimulus Plan and providing an effective date.
Mayor, may I speak?
Yes, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This is resolution two thousand twenty-one twenty R. It is specifically to authorize the city council to use up to five hundred thousand dollars from the St. Cloud OUC Business Retention Fund. We have notified OUC of our intent to use the funds and they have no objections. Um, this would fund phase one and phase three of the stimulus plan. Phase one, of course, is for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and phase three is for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as well. Um, it's consistent with our strategic plan goal for economic development and growth management and staff recommends approval of resolution two thousand twenty-one twenty R to use up to five hundred thousand dollars from the OUC retention fund. Have the answer to it.
Thank you. Once again, is there anyone that has registered to speak to this item? Madam Clerk?
No, we have no one registered and no one in the chambers.
Thank you. We have discussion, a motion by council. Councilmember Trace?
Um, I just want to point out our, um, kind of applaud staff for, for coming up with this idea. I think it's a, uh, excellent use of the funds, um, out of that OUC fund, uh, for this business stabilization. So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty one twenty R.
Councilmember Askew, do you like to speak to this?
Uh, I'll second it and I'd also like to commend, um, staff for coming up with this and this is just, I think it's going to be a true help to a lot of the businesses. I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Trace and a second from Councilmember Askew. And, uh, I think we all have the same. and I think we all have the same sentiment. Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero.
Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Clerk? Do what? Madam, Madam Clerk, will you call, will you read item number four?
Resolution Number 2020-132R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, creating a special award leave program for employees related to the novel coronavirus disease, COVID-19, and the current state of emergency, and providing an effective date.
Mayor, may I be right?
Yes, you may, Mr. Sturgeon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Council, if you recall, last council meeting, we had a, a discussion about my intention to provide our employees with a special pay, and we went back and looked at that legally. I'm going to ask Mr. Menzera to review that, and we're unable to do that because we didn't have a policy in place for this type of emergency. Um, some people compared us to the City of Kissimmee. Um, their chief executive, their city manager has different executive powers that I have. So I had to bring this in front of the council to be approved, um, but because of legal ramifications, I wouldn't be able to do the pay, so we've come up with a special award leave program, and I'll ask Mr. Menzera to jump in if I could, Mayor.
Mr. Menzera?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Sturgeon. So, Mr., as Mr. Sturgeon pointed out, he did come to us and ask us to review this, this, uh, this item from that perspective. Unfortunately, the statute, the legislature several years ago put in place a statute that prohibits the payment of extra compensation to a city employee after they have provided the services. So essentially, that provided, that, that meant that the city could not go back in time and, and add a supplemental compensation package for employees who had already provided the services to the city. So this was the alternative that we came, that we've come up with to basically allow them award leave, which does not require a direct payment of payroll dollars to the employee, and therefore doesn't qualify as compensation, but does allow them to have some extra time off due to the fact that they had to, uh, have, they were required to work on city facilities during the state of emergency. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sturgeon, do you have anything else?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just want to also assure the council that, that we're going to look into this. We will come back and develop a policy. Hopefully, we won't ever have another pandemic, but that kind of encompasses any type of unforeseen emergency, and I'll present that to the council requesting me be allowed to establish that emergency pay. I already do it through the hurricanes, but it wasn't addressed for specific types of incidents. So I'd like to come back with something that in the near future.
Thank you. I think that'd be appreciated. Madam Clerk, is anyone registered to speak to this item?
I do not have anyone registered or anyone in the audience.
Thank you very much. Do I have discussion and/or motion by council? Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Um, thank you to the city manager for the quick pivot on this idea. And, you know, I know that we had talked about doing the previous program, so I appreciate you, you trying to find a way to get what we were trying to do accomplished. So I appreciate that. Um, if no one else has any comments, I would make a motion to approve.
Then I'll make a second. Is there any other comment? We certainly appreciate all that the staff has done. Appreciate, again, Mr. Sturgeon's creativity here. Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero.
Brings us to our attorney, Mr. Menzera. Do you have anything for us?
I do not, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Menzera. Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, Mayor, one quick item. Um, I went back and looked at the agenda prep worksheet, and we were scheduled this month to have a workshop on commercial and residential architectural design standards. Um, that has been pushed to next month on the 18th, so we'll see how the COVID-19 thing works out. Hopefully, we can have a workshop on that, and we'll be ready to go. I just wanted to tell the council that Mr. Trace had asked that question, so. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to bring up a, a question um, for all of us to, to think about and talk about and hopefully enact. Um, a while ago, we had moved the fire inspection, um, the, the part of that that is under the building department. We moved those staff and those fees under the building department. I wondered if everyone's feeling about going back the past three or four years and reallocating those funds and, uh, and backcharging the, the building department. Um, that, the, the point of this is, right now, we're, we're kind of up at our limit of how much building funds we can, we can hold in the building department um, uh, based on statute that changed last year or the year before. So I was just wondering if we could, um, if, uh, it was the councils, um, uh, if thought to update that part of, uh, policy to, to move those funds to help with that allocation.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Um, thanks for bringing that up, uh, Mr. Trace. I know that, um, when I came on to council, our finance people weren't as easy to understand as Ms. Colazo is now. And you would ask questions, and I would always be like, what? At the end of it, I never really understood. But to kind of like tag into your comment, one of the previous finance director had told me that we, just in the last couple of years, had broken out the building fund and, and its own fund, and he had said, I don't know why we did that. I mean, so if that's something we could go back and look into, um, and see if there was ways to reallocate funds, I'm all for that.
Well, I certainly don't have any opposition of that certainly being looked into and see if that's a possibility. So Ms. Colazo, could you check into that and get with Mr. Sturgeon and the, uh, city attorney? And review the item?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, as you directed, I'll look over, um, and, yes, sir. Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, and Mr. Sturgeon, I can believe you're on the line. Yes, I can now.
I'm so sorry. Yes. Sorry about that. Yes, we, I will definitely do what's been said.
Well, thank you. I should have gone through Mr. Sturgeon, and I got a little ahead of myself. Mr. Sturgeon, you'll take care of that, I assume.
Absolutely, Mayor. Council, we'll, we'll look into that and report back.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Matheny? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Trace, are you through?
Uh, uh, one thing, I just wanted to thank a lot of the local businesses. Um, some of them have opened up their doors to allow residents, you know, the, a lot of those businesses are still able to get meat in bulk and vegetables in bulk, and they're, um, they're buying them on behalf of some of the citizens and, and reselling them to them, um, at middlemore, no profit, um, to help, you know, get some of that out there to some of the residents. I just want to thank some of those businesses that have done that. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I, I don't really have anything to update. I know y'all are shocked. I would, I would just like to say to the, um, St. Cloud Police Department that I really appreciate their professionalism um, during this really, you know, tough time in our city's history. I know we had a horrible, horrible incident happen, and I know that, you know, emotions flared and, and, you know, there's, there's just been a lot of, um, angst in the city, and, and, you know, the city, um, the St. Cloud Police Department has just maintained a level of professionalism, you know, while being attacked that I, you know, I, I really applaud them for that and thank them for all of their hard work in getting, in getting to the bottom of, uh, of what's happened in this incident. And also, I know there's a lot of hard work yet left to do, and so I just, I just want to give them kudos. All of the first responders, you know, even the EMS that had to re, respond to that event, that just had to be horrific. Um, and I just really appreciate all they do for us.
Thank you. Councilmember Askew?
And I would say the same for Mr. Trace and, uh, Deputy Mayor Matheny. I, all of the things that staff has done and police and EMS and the fire department and staff that picks up our trash, everything. It's, uh, there's, there hasn't seemed to be a hiccup in there, so I appreciate Bill's leadership and Pete's leadership. You go, and, and, thank you so much.
The, I'd like to say ditto to all of that. The staff has just been amazing. Uh, I'm very grateful to Mr. Sturgeon for his incredible, excellent leadership. Uh, thank you for the way you really served our community. It's been excellent. I would like to just, uh, bring up an item for you, Mr. Sturgeon, uh, to check into. Usually after, uh, if, if anything happens like it happened in 2008 and with all of the uncertainty in our economy, uh, usually, a lot of things begin to crank up on the federal level for infrastructure projects, and I just want us to be prepared that if that is something that does become available as far as funding, uh, to put people to work who may be out of work, uh, just, uh, and you're probably already ahead of me, I hope, I would imagine, that if any of these dollars do become available in grants, et cetera, uh, that whatever infrastructure projects that we could hopefully have shovel ready to go would, would get us ahead of the game of being able to qualify for any kind of funding uh, that might become available. If you could, uh, start in making sure we have that list updated of things that we might be able to take advantage of if that funding does become available.
Yes, sir, Mayor, we're working close. I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first off, yes, we're working with our, both our state and our federal lobbyists to pick up on those things. They're really good at giving us a heads up. Um, they're a great procurement team and a contract grant writer that's been phenomenal. So when that stuff starts coming down the pipeline, we'll be ready to go.
Good. That was my next point, to make sure we communicate with our lobbyists to identify any, uh, available funds that might be things that we could take advantage of, and, uh, so you're already ahead of the game then. Thank you. Uh, just want to remind anybody that might be listening uh, that the census is very, very important. And if you haven't, uh, participated and filled out your portion of the census, please go online and do so. It's very important to our city as well as to our county, and just encourage you to please be a part of that census and please be counted and fill that out. With that, we come to our information section and reports section. Thursday, May the 14th, Osceola County's Transportation and Transit Department meeting will take place at 6:00 PM. Tuesday, May the 19th, Osceola County's Transportation and Transit Department meeting will take place at 6:00 PM again. Thursday, May the 28th, we will have a city council meeting. We have issued three proclamations. A proclamation in recognition of Building Safety Month, a proclamation in recognition of Emergency Medical Service Week, a proclamation in recognition of National Public Works Week. I'd like to remind all of our council that the warrants list number 10 and 11 are available for your review. With that, there's nothing else on our agenda. We will consider ourselves adjourned. Thank all of you for participating, and thank you for your patience this afternoon. We're done.
Thank you, Mayor.